Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Right? You might be surprised to see me up here. But I am Rafael Avila. I am the Vice President of Technology Services. And Mike Rambrose, our President and CEO, along with other members of our management team, could not be here this morning. So I am going to assist with facilitating our meeting this morning. I would like to start by welcoming new residents, Dr. Misha and Mrs. Charlotte Schwartz in Apartment 2407B. Welcome to our community. There was an internal move, Dr. Paul Schwaber and Dr. Rosemary Balsam. They relocated, and they are now living in Apartment 507. What I'd like to do now is call Maria Lasala, our Spiritual Care Coordinator, to come up and open us up this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Raf. Hi, friends. I'm Maria Lasala, the Spiritual Care Coordinator. It's good to be with you today. Now, I don't know about you, but I've been waiting for spring. I've been waiting for days that last longer, light in the sky a little bit later into the evening. I've been keeping my eyes open for the flower buds making their appearance and for warmer temperatures that invite us to spend time outside. Yes, spring has arrived. But spring's arrival doesn't necessarily relieve the worries that we hold. "The world is on fire," wrote Margaret Rankle in The New York Times a couple of weeks ago. And she's not wrong. As winter turns to spring, war rages in Ukraine. A new COVID variant has emerged in Europe, and religious, political, and social issues continue to divide us as a nation and sometimes even in our own families. Looking around, we might imagine that love and kindness and faith in the goodness of humanity are in short supply. But we know better, don't we, friends at Whitney Center? A month ago, I talked with you about a blog I started reading during the pandemic called Reasons to Be Cheerful. Each month, I'd read about good things happening around the world. So this month, I read a story about how Airbnbs are opening their homes to Ukraine's refugees, making room for people who have been displaced as they have had to flee their homeland. Now, here's a curious thing that I didn't know about the blog Reasons to Be Cheerful. The brains behind the blog is David Byrne, the David Byrne of the rock band Talking Heads, who has a current hit called American Utopia on Broadway. So Byrne, in writing the blog this month, told us that the purpose of the blog was to celebrate, to represent, and amplify the great ideas that are being implemented around the world. His goal was to ensure that our picture of the world contained the joy that it should. Now, I know the front page of the newspapers remind us that this is a world on fire, but it is also true that the world is a lot of other things, too. The first blooms of spring have begun to appear and attest that even through seasons of struggle, the good and the beautiful offer a holy balance to the places of despair. Signs of strength, of courage, of conviction are all around us. We said goodbye to two friends from our community this month, Angela Mayer and Barbara Lukez. We give thanks for their lives lived among us. And we extend our compassion and our support to Angela's husband, Peter, during this time of his sadness and grief. Let's remember them, Angela and Barbara. Friends, I want to close my comments by inviting you to keep an eye on the news of the day. We are citizens of this world. But I am also going to encourage you to spend just as much time looking for signs of joy wherever they're appearing in your life, reaching out to make the kinds of human connections that restore our souls, that lift our spirits. There are many reasons to be cheerful and to have hope. I hope you will join me in both. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. You know, if I could just replace my alarm clock with your messaging every morning, if we could all do that, I think the world would be in a better place, right? Thank you. Thank you. Susie Weisinger, our President of the Resident Council, could not be here today, but I believe Lynn Hawkins, our Vice President of the Resident Council, has some remarks.
And I was going to say, timeout for a brief commercial from the Residence Council and the Landscape and Garden Committee. There are garden plots available if there are gardeners out there who have hesitated to sign up for one. They're free, no charge. Sometimes dirt, fertilizers, tools are available in the shed. And I encourage potential gardeners to see me or Jerry Hesse and sign up for a plot. Thank you. End of commercial.
Thank you, Lynn. So I believe Chris Johnson, on behalf of the Conversation and Nature Committee, Conservation, excuse me, and Nature Committee, has a presentation. It makes for good conversation, too.
Marjorie's going to join me because she's part of this team. You might want to put it on your...
No, it's fine.
So this is kind of a reprieve of something that we did a number of years ago through conservation. And what we're trying to do is to help you pick out the flexible plastic in your apartments which we're asking you to recycle. Now, prior to COVID, what we did with flexible plastic was we put it outside on the day that our hard plastic recycling was picked up. And the staff would take it and put it into a bag, and ultimately, the drivers of the van would take it to Stop &amp; Shop or other places where, in Stop &amp; Shop, for example, just inside the door before you get to the carts, on the right-hand side, there's a box where you put flexible plastic. And you usually can put everything squashed down into a bag like that, so you're able to take it to Stop &amp; Shop or other places. I think Walmart also has a place to put it. Because of COVID, we had to stop doing that because the staff was deleted, and people were individually collecting their flexible plastic, or they had stopped doing it. And the Conservation Nature Committee is now trying to restart this program. And you will see on Earth Day on April 22nd that we're going to continue this education and help to try to help you figure out what flexible plastic you have in your apartment to recycle. However, today, for a treat for you, Marjorie, Hertzemberg, and I are going to do flexible plastic show and tell. So I'm asking you all to just settle back and pretend you're in the first grade and just pay close attention, and we will point out some different items for you. So this would be what your paper towels came in. You'll notice that most of these items, I think you'll all be astonished at how much flexible plastic we use in this world. Everything seems to be covered with flexible plastic. And all of these items can be recycled. So I'm putting it into the bag here. Ah, bubble wrap. Now, this one is a little entertainment for you because with the bubble wrap, we're asking you to break all of the... Before you put it in. So if you have any anger issues, here's a good way to work them out, you know, just go along popping all of them, and then put them in your bag. So this one is not complete. I'll have to get back to it. The container on top of your toilet paper is flexible plastic. I'm sure you're all using that item. So you'll see, this is just like a piece of flexible plastic that was wrapped in some item that we received. So that you should be also putting aside and keeping in your bag. Again, this would have been inside, this would have been what the bread, the loaf of bread had been wrapped in. So it's just astonishing how much flexible plastic we have in this world. This is, this was from the last, I guess there was a cookie in this from the last bake sale. So you'll notice that at, in the bistro, some of the items, they put them into a bag, and it's really not plastic, but sometimes it is, so you need to look at it. The way to determine something is flexible plastic is if it doesn't tear, it's flexible plastic. I mean, think about anything else here. Uh-huh. So now, this is from Amazon Prime, and it has inside this kind of like bubble wrap, but this is also flexible plastic. And you don't have to work at reducing any of this. There's no need to do that. You just put it into your flexible plastic bag. So now, this is one that probably most of you will not have. It's what the bird seed came in. But you probably, you might have something that's as big as this, for example, from the cleaners. Usually, the items that come back from the cleaners are covered with plastic. So anything big like that is also something that you can put into your flexible plastic This is like the inside of your cereal box. You notice that there's, again, it doesn't tear, so it is flexible plastic. This just came, something that we purchased. It was covered with something like this. And here you go, more flexible plastic. The world is covered in flexible plastic. A FedEx package, again, has that inner kind of like protective bubble stuff. It's not very, doesn't have to be broken. It's just flexible plastic goes into your bag. Another bread wrapper. So I think maybe you're getting it now. I hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, this was, apples came in this, and now, you know, some of you sometimes have salad bags. And the salad bags, because there's a residue of food in them, probably is not something that you would put in here. But the apple bag was perfectly clean and perfectly all right, so here it goes into the flexible plastic. Oh, one more, huh? There's a few more? So this is the one that I wanted to tell you about. This came from Amazon or someone else, and it had a label on it. In order to put it into the flexible plastic bag, you have to cut the label off. It's not very hard to do. Your scissors really move through this stuff very easily. So cut the label off before you put it into your flexible plastic bag.
Probably enough.
Yeah, probably, right. Well, a couple more. So, you know, bag, there are baggies that you're using all the time. Some of them have something up here at the top that's a color, but, and they used to say you had to cut it off, but you don't have to cut it off. Just goes directly in.
Okay.
A container for cough drops. Again, it's flexible plastic. It would go into your flexible plastic bag.
Okay, you contend?
Is that, oh, one more, maybe? Do a little tiny one. Ah, here we go. Oyster cracker packages, guys. I think we've all discovered how delicious the oyster crackers are in the bistro. But if you look at that, there it is. It's flexible plastic. As long as you get all the crumbs out, that goes into your flexible plastic bag. And the last one, to just show you, the baggie, this would go in. It has color on the top, but that doesn't matter. If there's color on the item, it does not matter. It still goes into your flexible plastic bag. And remember that I took a whole bunch of items like that, squashed them down enough so that they get as small as this, so they're very able for you to use. And here you go. This you would take to Stop &amp; Shop. And what they do with it at Stop &amp; Shop is they, they send it to a manufacturer who makes that plastic furniture that we have outside in a lot of our, on a lot of our patios and things like that. So it's being recycled for a good cause. And of course, the big bag also, that you put everything in, that's recyclable, so here we go. And that's the end of our show. If you have any questions, I'm around, I'll be around after the meeting.
How about Saran Wrap?
No.
No Saran Wrap?
No, why not?
Why not?
Thank you.
Why no Saran Wrap?
I don't know. I can make it up.
By Fiat.
Well, we'll stick around and get that question answered at the end. I'm sure Chris will want to hang out. But thank you for reminding us. Every little bit helps, right? Have you all seen that documentary with that island of garbage that's floating around in the ocean, right? It's terrible. So thank you. So let's get right into our departmental and operations updates. I'm going to start with Lifestyle Services. And representing that area is going to be Thomas Hudson, our Director of Dining, followed by Emily Aguilar, Director of Facilities, and Maria Freida, Director of Resident Services. So why don't you guys come on up and give your update? I'd like to just ask our team members that, we want to make sure that we capture everyone's questions for those that are watching this on our live stream on Channel 102. And without a mic, they won't be able to hear your questions. So if you could, please, wait to call on, upon someone until they have a microphone in their hand. I think we have two mics in the chair in the back. If I can just get some mic runners to pass those around, just be patient, raise your hand, and we'll get, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions after each individual presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Sure about that? Good morning, everyone. All right, all right. We're not outside in the rain. We're warm in here. So hopefully, I won't be too long today. My name is Thomas Hudson, Director of Dining Services, for those who haven't met me yet. But I have a couple of things to share today, and they were inspired by my journey to work. So on my journey to work, listening to my music, I heard Wilson Pickett. Anybody know him? You don't know the song "In the Midnight Hour"? All right, well, no music people here today. Then I heard Cyndi Lauper singing "Time After Time." Then there was Shirley and Lee that followed up with "Come on, baby, let the good times roll." So I was inspired to speak about time and hours today. So I just want to mention a few things, especially for our center stage dining room. I see and I understand that a number of diners, after finishing your meal, you'd like to sit and chat and enjoy your company and the comfort of center stage. I just want to ask of you to be cognizant of the timing that we need and my staff needs in order to clean up and to get home at the time they would normally like to get home to their families. So the time we close center stage is eight o'clock. So we would like to ask that around that time, I'm very close to it, that you start to make your way elsewhere. Now, having said that, I think I'm working on preparing a very vibrant after-dinner selection that I'd like to offer in the pub and in the living room, so you can sit and have your conversation there. As your after-dinner selection, I would like to offer a nice cognac for those who like it, or a chartreuse, if you're so inclined. But I'm creating a menu specifically for that, that will have all these after-dinner drinks, so we can entertain you. There's no need to run off to your apartment right after dinner. We can hang out and converse a little. So I want us to be conscious of that eight o'clock time. Speaking of eight o'clock, the pub, for those who frequent the pub and enjoy the services there, the pub is going to be closed at eight o'clock. There is absolutely no need to leave at seven. What we are doing is the meal is available from five to seven, but the pub will be open until eight. So please feel free to continue to hang out. By 7:15, it's almost dark over there, and I would like to see people, you know, enjoy another drink, enjoy the company of your friends, and just relax. Continuing with ours, the Corner Store is going to be open on Saturdays, starting in April. It won't be for the entire day, but we're going to have a selection, you know, it probably maybe might be nine to two or nine to three, something like that, that gives you the opportunity to do some of your, picking up a few grocery items on a Saturday. One of the other things we're looking to do with that time is we're, we're hoping to start a little market on a Saturday, so you can pick up some of your produce items that normally you would run out to the supermarket and get. We get a lot of requests for a single onion or two potatoes or things like that. So I said, you know, it's obviously, we fill that need, but then you have to understand what's the larger picture. It means people are looking for these items, and we don't have that in the store on a regular basis. So we're looking to start a little market and let it grow into a wonderful little farmer's market. We'll start to maybe partner with some local farms and bring some nice stuff in, so we can have a good time on a Saturday. So you can look out for that coming up in the next, next month or so. So I spoke about the store, center stage, and the pub, and hours. The other thing I'd like to mention before I go is, we've started some comprehensive training in our, in our center stage. You will notice that the service would not have been where we would like it to be because we have new people, they haven't yet gotten a full grasp of the standards that we want to attain. But we're, we've started our training program, and I hope that over the next week or so or two weeks, and ongoing, you will see a definite change in the level of service that you receive, in their communication and in their handling of your dining experience. Please feel free, if you don't think it is so, to let me know, as some people do. And I really appreciate that one-to-one conversation. It lets me know pretty quickly what you're seeing, what you're feeling, and that you really care about your dining experience, as I do. All right? So on that, is there any, are there any questions? Yes?
I want to personally thank you for the French Crollers.
Okay. Well, in response to that, I would say, I don't think I had much of a choice. I think I have 15 emails from Deanie about, I had to get them. There was no choice. I couldn't go any further without getting them, and I hope you enjoy them. Just for anyone, it's the French Crollers, those, what we call the wiggly donuts that you'll see in the, in the, in the bistro. I am, I'm never opposed, just so anyone knows, I'm never opposed to suggestions or recommendations. I do like people to understand that I may not be able to react immediately to something you suggest, but it is never pushed away. It's always given the appropriate thought and consideration. So always feel free to let me know things you like, or things you'd like introduced or so on. All right? Any other questions? I don't like cricket. All right. Well, thank you for your time. Have a great day. Don't, spring is almost here, which is signified by the rain that we are having today. All right? Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Thomas. I know a little bit about music. My name is Emily. I'm the Director of Facilities. My team consists of maintenance and housekeeping. I am going to be quick on my message because I know Maria has a little bit more to share, so I'm going to give her some time. Spring is among us, and as you can see, the weather temperatures are all over the place. With that, I know some of you are anxious to get out, sit, get some fresh air, and have fairly asked to start placing our patio furniture outside. While it may sound easy to do, I must tell you, there is a process and a sequence of events that must take place before we set up our community. This process will commence in the next coming week or so. We aim to stick with our tradition, which is having our patio furniture right before Mother's Day. With the amount of furniture to fill the community, we have to inspect, clean, repair, and work around the weather conditions, which sometimes there is not always cooperative. This is why it takes us so much time to create an enjoyable outdoor experience. The results are actually worth the wait. We appreciate your patience and your support, and we'll soon have these items out. With that said, are there any questions that you may have for housekeeping, maintenance? Okay? Sounds good. Enjoy the day, everybody, and I'm going to turn it over to Maria.
Good morning, everyone. So good to see you all. Yes, and spring is in the air. I mean, it, and that's why I needed some extra time, because with spring, it's the dawn of a new day, and I'm looking forward to some new experiences, events, and then all that goes along with the, the time and season. So I'm Maria Freida, for those of you who haven't met me yet, and I haven't met you, and I'm the Director of Resident Services. Resident Services is customer-focused with a team of dedicated Resident Services associates who do their best to be their best, as they offer services in reception, transportation, security, communication, and in the spa on Main. The team is growing, and I am pleased to announce our newest team members. In reception, Laura Gonzalez and Paige Gionnet and Donna McConan. And in security, we welcome Nan Rivera and Cynthia Vileboss. Experiencing their interactions with you, our customers, as many of you do firsthand, are... are aware of the why we do what we do. And that is to offer experiences that bring joy, solutions that bring relief and reassurance that when you need us, we are there for you. Customer engagement is what drives this department, and that is why I am committed to making its programming component unique and diverse. And I'm here today to briefly discuss, discuss what you might expect this spring. For those of you who arrived earlier today, you might have seen a projected image of what is the Whitney Center Cultural Cultured Events and Films in the CAC Spring and Summer of 2022. You'll all be receiving a copy of this via email. And for those of you who are not accepting emails, uh, printed copies will also be, um, at the reception desks. Also today, um, after the town meeting, I will be at the, um, trip interest table. Um, and copies of the calendar will, will be available for you to pick up as well. I'm going to also emphasize that this calendar is for events that are happening here on site in the CAC. This calendar does not include any off-site trips, such as museum trips or excursions. And it also doesn't include the, what's planned for the summer for music. So if just looking at this and realizing that there's even more, it's going to be a wonderful spring and summer with a lot of unique opportunities. And in fact, that's what I said, in fact, just as a reminder, I will be at the trip table um, in the B Street until two o'clock today. Once again, the intention of the trip interest table is to gather information as to where the community, where you want to go. And based on those responses to the posted sites, I will follow up with setting up dates for the trips. Um, just as a reminder too, there is a bus to the opera this Saturday for opera ticket holders leaving at eleven fifteen from the north desk. And uh, what else did I need to say? Oh, and yeah, that, that's, I'll see you with it. Come to the trip table. I want to hear where you all want to go, and that is what's important. Um, I know that some of the museums that you have asked about, um, do not offer docent tours quite yet. Um, the Yale, uh, Art Gallery, as long as the Brit, the Center for British Art, um, do not offer docent tours. Um, but that's no reason why we can't take you and drop you off at the museums as well. I'll do my best to find tours, um, at the various sites, but they may very well be open-ended for a number of reasons. Um, you know, COVID did have a general impact on their staffing more than anything else. And I see in some places that there are still some restrictions that are being imposed. But don't let that stop us, right, from, from doing what we would like to do. So uh, as you look at the calendar, you'll see that kicking off the calendar will be a return visit from Simone Lana, live from Rome, with a virtual tour of the great women of Egypt. And that is our kickoff schedule for March twenty ninth, which will be next Tuesday. You'll see that all of the events are on Tuesday. All of them, with the exception of two, will start at four thirty P M. Unique films and videos from Seven Art Productions will range from behind-the-scenes installations to the production of Making War Horse, as well as interviews with Renee Fleming and Tony Bennett. Those are the films that I was telling you are so unique to us, that you are part of a very, um, in a much an inner circle of being able to see them. And I'm so happy that we've had the opportunity to show them here. But what's really exciting about on this calendar are two really special events, two that I'm happy to share with you today. On April seventh, Steve Gurney is making his second presentation of Cabaret II. You might remember, and I thought, thought those of you who might have been here are going to be thrilled because he had created a wonderful playlist of music. Not only is Steve giving you the opportunity to hear the songs, but he does his research in a way to really give you insight as to what the art is, what the artist meant, what the musicians mean, and what the song means to him as well and to many of you. The other comes, and what's great too, is that these events are coming from individual residents. They're thinking, okay, I have a passion and I want to share my love, whether it's for music or art. But in this next case, it's theater. The next comes to us, comes to us from Bitsy Clark, who was so moved by a performance by Stephen Drifin titled Death by a Thousand Cuts: A Requiem for Black and Brown Men, that after seeing the performance, she said, it absolutely has to be here. And actually, it's going to happen. There will be two performances on April fourteenth in the afternoon, one in the afternoon and one in the evening. But already, due to much of the interest that there is because of the buzz, we're actually going to be opening the rehearsals, which will be on Sunday, April tenth, which is Palm Sunday, and on April thirteenth, the Wednesday before the show, after five o'clock. Um, so Steve Drifin is very eager to have as many people experience this. And if you choose to attend the rehearsal rather than the performance, you'll be able to do so. Also, by popular demand and even opening this up to our Thrive at Home members, we will be taking reservations for seats. So uh, we will have, I'm relying on the competent, uh, the cultural competency team task force to help me out and be able to have a, to a table set up for residents and Thrive at Home members to make the reservations, as well as staff. It's really important. We want the staff to participate in this as well. So it will be a full house, to say the least, but I'm really looking forward to that. And thank you, Bitsy, for making this all possible. Um, one more resident project that I'd like to mention is the Heritage Project, which is headed by Leah Stambler, providing the community with themed topic displays based on the calendar year. And Tish, she too has created a calendar that I will be sharing with you um, at the trip interest table, as well as sending via email. So um, there's a lot to look forward to. Um, and to my last point, um, I mentioned earlier that security is part of the resident services team. And you can't talk about security without talking about safety. News of late of unfortunate incidents in Hampton and in New Haven have prompted me to share these reminders, especially when being in public places. You probably have seen them or have read them, but I'd like to take the time now to reinforce them. Um, so always remember to please park in well-lit areas, to avoid driving or shopping alone whenever possible. Don't leave your purse unattended in a shopping cart. I know it's distracted. You feel there's nobody around, but please always be aware of that. If possible, leave your purse at home. Carry only essentials with you, such as money and credit cards, and your identification in your pockets. Close and lock all your windows and doors when you park, and don't leave valuables in your car. And if you sense trouble, get away. Um, walk with your head up and your eyes alert, and always have your keys accessible. And lock your car after you've entered your car. I know we're distracted. We're looking at phones. We're looking at a lot of things. We're making sure we have everything, but please remember to do that. But above all, please, please, please always remember that money and property can always be replaced. And I also want to take the time to also recognize, um, our safety committee. There is a resident safety committee, which is headed by Phyllis Medvedow. Phyllis has been, uh, working with Kaylee Williamson in reassuring and helping you to also remember all of the different steps and procedures, not only that you can take, but the safety of what we have implemented here at Whitney Center, paying attention to access to, um, you know, just walking around the campus, what doors are accessible, um, to recognize, um, that, um, we are making sure that your purs are in proper operations. Your purs are your pendants, making sure that you have batteries and flashlights. So an announcement will be posted in My W C Life reminding not only about the red, uh, the safety committee, but also as a recruitment. Phyllis is really eager to have as many members on, on board for the safety committee as possible because we're all here, not only, uh, most importantly, to help each other. And that's all I have. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria, Emily, Thomas. Reporting for enrichment services is Robert Schmelzer, our exercise physiologist. I want you to come on up and uh, I'll see if I'll pass the test here. So enrichment services largely consists of your community resource team, and that is exercise, your liaisons, spiritual care, well-being advisor, aquatics. Did I miss anybody? And Thrive at Home. Where's Robert?
All right, good morning. Thank you, Raf. That was all I was gonna say, so I think I can go sit down now. Now, but um, like Raf said, the enrichment services is the community resource team and Thrive at Home. Um, so I'm just gonna read off a couple of reminders and a notice that Michelle Pandolfi, our director, had put together. So as a reminder, especially to new residents, the community resource team consists of Maria Lasala, who addresses your spiritual health, who came in to start this, uh, this meeting today, Laura Sorensen, who addresses your emotional and mental health, me and my team, Jackie and Justin, uh, to address your movement and fitness needs, your liaisons, Mary, Wanda, and Debbie, to address your questions and help you navigate through Whitney Center, and then Michelle Pandolfi, who's our department lead. From, um, a spiritual care standpoint, the Jewish and Christian holidays arrive next month. Whitney Center will again host the storyteller Katie Harold for the annual Passover Seder, recalling stories of the Israelites' freedom from bondage in Egypt. This year's Seder dinner will take place on Monday, April eighteenth, in the Cultural Arts Center, and reservations for the event are required. Holy Week begins with Palm Sunday, Sunday, April tenth, and ends on Easter morning, April seventeenth. There will be Sunday church services offered by Maria on both Sundays, and Maria will also lead a Good Friday service on Friday, April fifteenth. Right, from Laura Sorensen, April's Women, I'm sorry, this is also Maria. April's Men and Women in the Bible will look at stories of biblical heroes, Moses and Jesus. So for details on those programs, such as locations and times, look at the My W C Life newsletter. And remember that Maria is always available to sit, talk, and walk and pray with you. And just reach out to her. From a movement and fitness, um, update, the hot tub is open for you, so please get down there and get a soak. It's looking great and it's, uh, enjoyable. Um, feel free to join me next week on March thirtieth for a virtual presentation on balance and posture and how our posture affects our balance and how we move, um, and some steps to improve your postural awareness and your balance. The program's gonna be at ten thirty through Zoom, and a link will be posted in the MyWClife.org. Thrive at Home updates. Thrive at Home is a membership program designed to provide life care for people who prefer to stay in their homes or are not ready to move to campus, a campus like Whitney Center. And with the benefits of twenty-four-seven care coordination. We have several applications in process for new members and just qualified one new member. The current membership is thirty, or seventy-three active members and a total of eighty-four. And that's it from, uh, the enrichment services department standpoint. If anyone has any questions, all right, thank you very much.
We're gonna get you, we're gonna get you a mic, Robert, if you can stay up here. Give us one sec.
I just think we all want to congratulate you on the wonderful job you've been doing and the effort you've put into the pool area.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. It's not exercise, all right? It's about movement, fitness. I gotta remember that next time. Uh, Michelle Stocking, might there be any reports regarding COVID? Yeah, okay. So Michelle Stocking is our supervisor of assisted living.
Good morning, everyone. I actually have two things to report. So the first is we did have one positive COVID case on campus this week. So it's only one, so we're doing very well still. So, but I just want to make sure that everyone stays vigilant and just know that there is a new variant out there. So just remain aware of who your visitors are and where you're going when you're off campus. And then the other thing I want to share is that the Department of Public Health came here on Monday for a surprise visit for assisted living, and they found no deficiencies and we got a clear survey for the next two years. So I just want to, thank you. So I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that and congratulate the whole community health services team. Is there any questions about clinical services? No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Great job on the survey. Thank you. Uh, Lynn Brown. Lynn Brown is our director of workforce development. And she's gonna provide, uh, maybe some statistics and how we're doing.
Hello, everyone. Um, like the theme of the day, it is spring. And as the crocus and the daffodils are growing, so are the applicants. Yay! We currently have ten full-time positions, um, a handful of, uh, part-time positions. This month, we hired fifteen new team members, and we have thirteen in process for next month. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Lynn. Workforce, right, it's a, really, it's a priority for the organization. Um, a lot of energy going into it. Thank you for your efforts, Lynn, and, and just getting great people in the door. Um, so the highlight of town meeting, Jeff Devaney, Vice President of Finance. Let us know. Let us know how we're doing, Jeff.
Thank you for that introduction. Jeff Devaney, Vice President of Finance. I just have a brief update on the finance department. We're actually going through a very busy time. We're, uh, being audited on our twenty-one numbers still, so we're going through that. That's starting to wind down, but, uh, hopefully next month we'll have audited numbers. And we're also beginning to implement a new accounting system, which is taking a lot of time, and that should go live in, uh, June. I'm sorry, can you hear me? No, you can't. I can't. I can't reach over here. Um, other than that, one of our team members is leaving the company. Lisa Borgnine, our health center biller, is, uh, leaving at the end of the month. And, uh, if you have any questions, reach out to Anne Matisse going forward on, uh, healthcare billing. Uh, that's all I really have for today. Any questions or? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. So Lynn, that's eleven full-time positions now, not ten. Um, Terry, did you have any comments or? Yeah, thank you. Terry Rio, Director of philanthropy.
Good morning, everyone. Um, uh, March first, we got the word out to staff that, um, we are accepting their applications to apply for grants of up to twenty-five hundred dollars per individual if they've been a Whitney Center employee for at least a year and they're in a full-time, a part-time, or a contract-specific position. Uh, so that's going on now. Those applications are due May one. And I will give, uh, kudos to Greg Seaman and his Grant Selection Committee because Greg and other residents on that committee really, um, you know, put the effort out into getting word out to the, the staff. They themselves interviewed some past applicants. We, uh, thanks to Nick in I T, we, we videotaped them and we've used clips of the videotape, one so far. Uh, we'll use some others, and we get that out, uh, to the staff through our, um, internal communications, uh, digital network, thanks to I T, which they can get on their cell phone or they can get on their desktop. So, um, that's one way of they're getting the word on that. Also, um, managers, directors, supervisors, uh, have been sharing that with their teams individually, as groups. Um, and again, I mention this here so that if you know of any particular staff person, um, for example, I know of one resident who's very close to a, a staff person who's interested in poetry. So she's kind of, uh, encouraging her to apply, asking some questions. Um, so if anyone has, if any staff have any questions, they know they can come to me, Karen Lu Shinks, their manager, their supervisor, their department head. So, uh, as of today, I guess we've had probably eighteen applications taken. Uh, but again, they have until May one to complete those, and we will keep, every two weeks, I kind of send out a reminder in some form or another to encourage people. Um, but again, thank you because these grants are possible because we have, the philanthropy council has a staffed, um, development grant, a staff development fund of which, uh, monies go allotted to these grants. And this is once a year. Um, so I'll, I'll fill you in, uh, when, when that gets completed. The only other thing I wanted to add too is Maria mentioned, uh, thanks to Bitsy- thanks to Bitsy bringing a play on campus. It sounds wonderful, works so well with our cultural and diversity committee as well as other arts and cultural interests. But that play is being funded by, again, thanks to donors for the Cultural Arts Fund of the philanthropy council. So you're doing all this. So thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Terry. Yeah, philanthropy is doing great things, and how wonderful it is to get money into the hands of our team members to really help them with their personal and professional growth. So thank you. Thank you for your work. I'm sorry? Workforce development, yeah. Thank you. Sean, Sean O'Connor, Vice President of Marketing and Sales, will give a report. Thank you.
There we go. I was going to say Jeff and I, you want to stand up, Jeff? Here, we. Yeah, Jeff and I, we call each other each morning and say, what are you wearing? So that we can confuse you even more over who each one of us is. Let me give you a quick update on the marketing efforts here on campus. Currently, we have 22 apartments that are available for sale. Of those, 60% are one-bedroom or studio apartments, and then obviously 40% are two-bedroom. 18 are in the north building, and we have four available in the south building. Currently, we have nine apartments that are reserved, and all nine of those applicants have been approved and have 10%ed on those apartments. So you will see them most likely, most of them are going to move in the next 90 days or so. So hospitality committee, get ready. We've had two new residents move in since our last town hall. We are anticipating one new resident in the month of April. And the team has taken two new reservations since the last town hall. Our average occupancy is right around 87%, 88% right now. And the other thing I want to let folks know, because I know that you talk to your friends and neighbors, but entrance deposits are going up. So I'm working with Dawn and Colleen on the entrance deposits for the apartments, and those will be increasing. We'll put out notification, but I'm letting you guys know in advance. So if you have somebody who's looking and they want to save a little bit of money before they go up, now's their opportunity to do so. To date, we've had a total of four residents move in in 2022. Zero have moved into the north building, and four have moved into the south building. As Robert talked about, Thrive at Home is at 73 members. And the reason that's happened is we have added, we've added seven new members so far this year to Thrive at Home. The Health Center, just so everybody knows, it remains around between 31 and 33 people. We have about 35 beds that are open, but with the staffing, especially with trying to recruit resident nurses, it's going to stay right around that level. And then the last but not least, if you have any friends that you think might be interested in Thrive at Home or Whitney Center, please let us know. We'll reach out to them. Or if you want to try and coordinate something to have them come visit, we're happy to do that. I ran numbers for the last three years of residents who've moved into the community. And not surprisingly, in the top three categories was they knew somebody or they knew a family member. So those are really great leads for us to help manage and prospect. Any questions? All right. I was going to have Jeff come up.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, he got it. He got it. All right. So technology updates, a few things. We are looking to redesign the digital signage we have in the community. So what the digital signage is, if you don't know, is you'll see we have the three televisions along the sort of main street and north reception desk, right? And we typically broadcast programming information, things going on in the community, what's happening. Occasionally, you might see some of the programming on Channel 102 up there. So we're looking to redesign that, very likely reposition those screens to another location, generally kind of in the same area, but something a little bit bigger. We're considering a much larger screen instead of the little 32 on your screens. So we're looking to redesign that, and we'll keep it posted as that develops. We are always looking for opportunity to improve the various vehicles that we use to get information out to you. There is paper, there is email, MyWCLife. So we are really starting to look at a new resident and family app as a, potentially the primary vehicle to get you all the digital content, what's going on in the community, menus, content, you name it. But one of the really neat things, and then more information will come on that as we further develop that. But one of the neat things that I'm about 99.9% confident that we are going to do through the app is move, in addition to the resident phone directory, which you might have on paper, we're going to move the directory to a digital online format through the app, as well as a staff directory. So we'll have these two things up there. And the really neat thing about sort of digitizing the directory is that you could search, right? So you don't have to fumble through the paper trying to find who you're looking for. You can search for a partial number, an apartment number. But the really cool thing is, once we get the platform running, if you opt in and choose to allow us to, if you provide us your biography and allow us to put your biography into the phone directory, then what that enables is a fellow resident who maybe has an interest in golf could just search the directory for the word golf. Anyone who also has the word golf in their biography will show up for them, right? So we can make those connections. So more to come on that. But I just saw a show of hands, is that something that adds value to all of you, having a resident, a phone directory online? Yeah? Awesome. No? Okay. All right, well, we're not going to get all yeses. That's okay, right? Doesn't necessarily mean one replaces the other, but, right, the more we can do to get you the information you want, we'll do. So more info will come. And as we begin to really define the app and the look and feel, we won't be doing this alone, right? We'll invite residents along the way. It's a journey. We'll get your input. We'll get your feedback. So you can kind of let us know your feedback on the app itself and the navigation. So good things to come there. I want to mention that we're seeing an uptick in particularly scams, Amazon-type scams. We had a resident who unfortunately got hit for about $800 last week. We'll eventually get it credited back to a credit card. But this is a real popular one because it's very easy. And just to let you know, the scam is typically either a phone call or an email that is impersonating Amazon. And when you're getting scammed, the one thing to remember, a scammer needs to get an emotional response out of you, right? So their tactics, their words, the content that they're sending you is usually going to include, you need to do this now or something will happen. This will get blocked if you don't click this link. This is going to be suspended if you don't do this. You're going to collections. You're going to get arrested, right? There's a warrant for your arrest if you don't do this, right? That's debate, right? Let's get an emotional response. Let's have somebody click something or give us information before they have time to process. Keep that in mind. So with Amazon, the Amazon scam particularly, you get an email that says, and it looks, you know, scammers use sophisticated software, and they can send you an email that says it's coming from Amazon or Amazon Customer Service, and they can put the Amazon logo on it and make it look official. And the email will say something like, we want, we recognize that there is some unusual activity in your Amazon account. We want to verify that you have indeed purchased this $800 television, right? My God, I didn't buy an $800 television. So what does the email do? It instructs you to call a 800 phone number. And you call the number thinking that you're speaking to an Amazon rep, and you're not. You're speaking to a scammer. So the scam will typically go this way. We're glad that you called us. This is probably a fraudulent activity on your account. We want to make sure we refund you the $800. Go ahead and give us the credit card number on your account, and we'll process the refund, right? It always sounds silly after the fact, right? But in the heat of the moment, right, you're a little excited because you didn't buy an $800 TV and you want your money back. So they get your credit card number. And that's how the scam works. So be really, really careful. Be vigilant. We talk about this stuff all the time. And, but it's unfortunate. And it's sad because we just hear about this all the time in our community. Residents have lost from a few hundred dollars to tens of thousands of dollars is what we see. And if you're ever unsure or unclear, you know, just send us an email to IT. Just let us know, hey, is this legit? We'll let you know. Let's see. One other thing regarding scams. So somebody on my team reminded me that we spend about an hour with new team members when they come onboard through our Compass New Hire Orientation Program. IT spends an hour with all of our new hires to give them a whole presentation on the tactics and tools that scammers use to try to infiltrate our networks, our team members. A lot of the scams come through email. We call that phishing. Phishing with a P-H. We see a lot of scams coming through text messages now. You may receive random text messages from AT&amp;T, Netflix, DMV, you name it, right? That's called smishing, right? Those scams are called smishing. And again, they want you to take an action. They want you to click a link and take an action. So I was reminded that, gee, you know, we spend about an hour every two weeks with this hour-long video, and we go through all these tactics, and it's interactive, and we ask questions, and we show examples of the fake emails from Amazon and all the others. And I was asked, why don't we do this for our residents? So I was like, yeah, it's a good question. So that's what we're going to work to do. I'm going to work with the team. We're going to put together a presentation. I suspect it's going to be at least an hour and a half because just questions and things always come up, right? And I don't want to rush through it. So we'll go ahead and put that together, and we'll get some information out over the next few weeks. Maybe we'll do that here. Maybe we'll record it as well. So look for that. So that's the technology update. I want to mention that if you had any questions that you were prepared to ask of Mike Rambrose specifically, or Ken Sandberg, or any other members of the management team that could not be here, feel free to submit those questions to them via email. Also, I will be here at the conclusion of this meeting. If, I'll be happy to document your question and get it to them. So that is, we're going to give you about a half hour of your day back. So maybe you can use that time to visit Maria's table. But I just want to ask, are there just any general comments that anybody wants to make and get on the record? Just wait, let me just grab, let me get you a mic.
I just wondered with regard to all that's going on at Hampden Plaza, if we have any input or any way to know how the town is reacting to all this. The reports on TV have not been very impressive. They basically haven't been much more than what Maria said. And I just wondered if Whitney Center has any idea about what, how the town is really responding. I was at ShopRite an hour before the carjacking last Friday, and I really got nervous.
Sure.
And so I think it, I'm worried that the town's not being serious in their response.
Yeah, so I think what I'll do is, I'll bring this back to Ken because I know he has a relationship with, I can't remember the officer's name, who's actually our liaison, right, between Whitney Center and the police department. And maybe we can get some insight from them as to what the town's response is and what they might be doing to keep us safe. Mary, did you have a comment?
Yes, there was a meeting yesterday at the Miller Library for residents of Hampden. They're having another one next Wednesday evening also. But I happened to be at ShopRite because the owner of the plaza was also on the news yesterday that they've increased security. And yesterday at ShopRite, I watched a vehicle going up and down every aisle, and there's so much more security out there. So I noticed that at the plaza. But there is another meeting next Wednesday night.
Just so that you're aware, Carol Gilstead also had reached out to me and to Ken wondering if, with that context as Raphael indicates, how we can reach out to Mike D'Agostino. And Ken is, he's not here in the office today, but he is well aware of that, and it is going to follow up to see if we can get even Mike here to do something. But thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for that question.
Could someone describe how that carjacking, what the process was? Where was the car? Just so I know next time I go that way, where to park?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the incident, but, you know, we'll see if we can get that detail and, you know, if it helps us just remain extra vigilant and maybe not park here versus there. We'll definitely be sure to get that out. So I'm going to call Ms. Greenbaum.
I want to add on to that, that I, we were also at the shopping center yesterday, and there were patrol cars up and down and around and stopping. And it was very apparent. And some of them were in uniform and some of them weren't. So the people that were around.
Okay.
But the other, I wanted to ask you, and I, all the information that you're putting on the directory, on the, I may have misheard. We're not eliminating the paper, are we? The booklet that comes to us with the names?
The photo display?
To, the directory, the residence directory and the information that comes in that. Are we eliminating that? I may have.
No, in fact, I did not say we were going to eliminate that. So we're still sort of developing this, what it might look and feel like. And it's a hard balance for us, right? Don't use any more paper. Continue to use paper. Don't post in the elevator. Don't post in the elevator, right? We need to figure out that balance. And I get it, there's going to be, there might be a need to continue to put things on paper. Right now, nobody's going to have the ability to maybe have a mobile device and look for a phone number. However, what I will add is, just to vision this out a little bit further, is ultimately by putting a directory on an app that you can access from a mobile device, you could also call the person directly from the mobile device now through the directory, right? And then ultimately, and it is part of our technology plan and visioning, is to add more voice-assisted devices in the community so that if someone has a visual impairment and can't see the content on the mobile app, they can ask Amazon Echo, what's for dinner? Call Rafael Villa, what's the movie tonight, right? It's all part of the planning that we're undergoing right now. But I get your point, right? We got to kind of figure out what that balances.
I would say for our present generation, a hand, the paper you can hold in your hand and work with with your, you know, otherwise you're going also down to the station.
Yeah, yeah.
Stations, and you're taking a piece of paper to write everything down. So we never get away quite from everything in the paper.
I get it. And that's always a challenge with technology that we face, right? Because I need to vision out the future. I have to vision things out for the next customer, but I have to keep it practical for today's customer, right? But I appreciate your perspective. I think Ms. Krevlin had a comment?
I just want everybody to know that in today's New Haven Register, there is a big, long article about what's going on in this town with the hijacking at Hampden Plaza. And one of the things, well, you should go in the library or in the living room. And one of the things, well, you should go in the library or in the living room and read it. One of the things that they said is, when you're bringing your packages out, do not put them in the trunk of your car, but put them in a side door, because you have more protection between cars than you do when you're exposed in the back of your car. But read it, it was an extensive and very good article, and they are on top of things.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Braven?
While I was sitting here, I just got a scam that I thought I could read to all of you. If you, you know, when you have an iPhone, you keep getting text messages. So this, this was a text message that says, you've been overcharged in 2021, your refundable payment of six hundred and ten dollars will be sent to you by today. Please verify before we send your payment. And then there's a link to click on.
Yeah. So, yeah, so if you click the link, they're going to want to verify where to send the money to, and that's where they get your, your account information, and that's where they'll take the money out of. So, Ms. Fisher?
This is an old age problem with--
Go ahead and use the mic, please.
--with women being attacked in, close, oh, like an ice cream cone, they say. This is an old age problem of women being attacked in shopping centers. Might I make an old age suggestion? You wear your pocketbook under your jacket or coat. It should not be exposed.
Yeah, listen, all the tips are good, and it's, it's for everybody. Thank you for that, right? I'm, I'm fifty-one years old, and I, before I get in my car, what was that?
You're lucky.
I'm lucky, yeah. My wife feeds, my wife feeds me well, keeps me healthy. Before I get in my car, right, I'm in the habit of just kind of looking around, right? I just look around. I want to be, I just want to be aware of my surroundings, and that's something that everyone should do, no matter where you are. Just, just be aware of your surroundings, so. So thank you for that comment. And I'll add that sometimes you don't have to take your whole pocketbook, right? Sometimes you could just take maybe your debit card, maybe some cash or ID, you don't have to take the whole thing. So consider that, too. Yes, please.
Another safety issue. I have a little deck on my apartment that overlooks the parking lot, and what I've noticed in the afternoon sometimes, particularly at shift time, I may, I'd be out there getting a little sun, what I'm noticing is that the people coming in from Leader Hill, from the management, you can't, I'm stunned at the speed of the cars that are driving in here and across the front of the parking lot. Very scary, because, you know, people are going to walk out from underneath that deck. I saw one close call a couple of days ago where the person saw the car coming, so I implore you to get those speed bumps in there today. And I don't remember, is there on entering from Leader Hill, is there a speed limit sign close inside our parking driveway? It should, it should pull over fifteen miles an hour, but there are some very, I think, as change of shift people, mostly employees, although I'm not being accusation, but I'm very concerned about the speed of them coming down, both going in this direction and that direction. It's very scary. I mean, they're, they're, they're really going at least twenty miles above what they should.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'll bring that forward. Thank you. Okay. Well, thanks, everyone, for coming and giving me the honor to host this this morning. And just as a reminder, the next town meeting is going to be April 28th.
April 28th?
Yep, April 28th. And at that time, Mike Rambros had planned on providing an update of the capital expenditures after this meeting today, but we're going to do that at the next town meeting, April 28th. Thank you. [applause]